Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Rancher Mirage City Council Meeting for Thursday, February 7. The council also serves as a library and observatory board, the housing authority, and the city council representing the redevelopment successor agency. So I'd like to call this meeting to order and begin with a flag salute led by our Mayor Pro temp Iris Smotrich.
Please drag me into the our lovely flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Iris. Olivia, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Pro temp Smotrich?
Here.
And Mayor Kite?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Now move on to non-agenda public comments. And this is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda. And we would ask that you keep your speech to three minutes. So for those of you who have signed up, we'll be calling these yellow forms first, and then after that, if there are any others, we'll call a few later. Okay, so first one, Mr. Melendez.
Good afternoon, City Council of Rancher Mirage staff and we, the people out here. After shooting wildly for a couple of years out in this area, I think I finally hit a target that I want to stick to and keep shooting at. And that is the subject of the College of the Desert. Now, the College of the Desert is in the jurisdiction, the city jurisdiction of Palm Desert, as you know, but it's in the same community college district that covers a big area, including Rancher Mirage. And you've heard me talk about this a few times. I want, or I've already started a movement to upgrade the College of the Desert to a four-year college. And for very good reasons. One of the main reasons that I've discovered is that, is that out here, I've noticed that a lot of doctors and dentists and lawyers, their alma mater is not in the Coachella Valley. The College of the Desert is synonymous with the Coachella Valleys, I've mentioned before. Who better to go to when you need a doctor and a dentist and a lawyer than to some young whippersnapper that you helped raise? And their alma mater is in this valley where we live. So that's one of the main reasons that I want to upgrade the College of the Desert. And not only doctors and dentists and lawyers, college administrators and faculty, I've noticed that a lot of them are not from this area. What happens? Fresh kids, young whippersnappers, rugrats, fresh out of high school, attend the college. What are they thinking? They tell them, oh, you go two years here and we mistreat you for two years, but then you can go to a four-year college. Well, that's wrong. We have to help our kids here. Why? Because they're going to help us when we get old.
Thank you. Looks like we have some lovely ladies from Riverside County Date Festival, if you'd like to come forward. It must be date festival time again.
Good morning or good afternoon, council members, and thank you for having us here today. My name is Juliana Gaithan, and I am your Queen Shahrazad of 2019. I am a senior at Desert Mirage High School, where I serve as captain of the varsity cheer team, representative of the Arts, Media, and Entertainment Academy, and I am currently ranked second in my graduating class. In the fall, I hope to attend Barnard College of Columbia University to major in biological science. This year's fair opens on Friday, February 15 with opening ceremonies and blessing of the dates at 9:30 a.m. and runs through Sunday, February 24. Please join us for amazing exhibits, demolition derby, professional bull riding, and this year, the exciting sea lion splash. Now, I would like to introduce this year's Princess Dunyaad.
Hi, my name is Christina Marquez, and I am this year's 2019 Princess Dunyaad. I am a senior at Cathedral City High School. I am involved in multiple organizations, both in and out of school. Some are National Cherry League, MECHA, and HOSA. National Cherry League is a mother-daughter organization where we go out and help in our community. MECHA is a club to embrace our Latin American heritage, and HOSA is a club for students who are interested in pursuing a career in the medical field, like me. After college, I plan on attending medical school to become a family doctor. I applied to six schools in California, but my top choice is UC Riverside. Now moving on to the fair. This year's entertainment includes country singer Randy Hauser on Saturday, February 16, following Ramon Ayala on Sunday, February 17, Salt and Pepper on Friday, February 22, Cooling the Gang on Saturday, February 23, and on the closing day of the fair, on Sunday, February 24, we will have Mariachi Sol de Mexico. Now, I would like to introduce Princess Jasmine.
Hi, my name is Zoe Elders, and I'm the 2019 Princess Jasmine. I'm a senior at Shadow Hills High School, and I've been cheering for the last nine years. I'm the varsity cheer captain and also hold an executive position in my school's Renaissance program. After graduation, I plan on attending the University of Notre Dame in Indiana. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the special admission price days at the fair. So every day is Veterans Day. Veterans with a valid ID and three guests will be admitted for free. And on Monday, February 18, there'll be a special presentation on the pageant stage at 5:30 p.m. And on Friday, February 15, is Fantasy $5 Friday, where everyone's admitted for just $5. Kids' Days are Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 3:00 p.m. to close, where one child is admitted for free with a paying adult. And on Wednesday, February 20, the Riverside County Department of Waste Resources will be at the fair. If you bring in a small used electronic device, you'll be admitted for free. Now I'd like to hand it over to our 2019 Queen Shahrazad to wrap us up.
Once again, we'd like to thank you all for having us here today, and we look forward to seeing you at this year's fair. Do you have any questions for us?
Which one of you is going to ride the bulls?
All of us.
Columbia and Notre Dame. I have a daughter graduated from Columbia.
How wonderful.
So good luck to you and in your college.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To have three better, more attractive, and articulate representatives than we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You guys did so good talking, did wonderful, very, very good. Congratulations.
The next speaker is Tom Snyder. Tom?
Good afternoon, Mayor Kite, city council members. Kind of tough to follow the princesses. No costume, but I first want to thank you.
You want to give your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Address, please.
Our address?
Yes.
Is with, I'm with Animal Samaritans.
Okay.
I'm the CEO for Animal Samaritans. Sorry about that. And I want to thank the city council members for a generous grant for our animal rescue program. We received the funding in November, $3,500, and that has helped us achieve some really high rescue numbers. We've been able to save a lot of at-risk animals thanks to your support, so appreciate that. And I also want to remind everybody that we have a big fundraiser coming up in Ranch Mirage on March 9. About three years ago, when we were first opening the renovated Rancher Mirage Community Park, we were the first charity that you allowed to come and hold a fundraiser, and luckily, we've been invited back each time. So it's a 5K run. I've had the pleasure of some of the past mayors joining and joining me on stage, and so if your calendar is free, no pressure, you don't have to run the five miles.
Well, he would insist.
Oh, he wants to do. But we would love to have you there as a representative of the city. And here's some Save the Date cards, if I can pass those out to you.
Thanks for being here today. The next speaker will be David Fraschetti.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, staff. It's great to see you all. I'm here basically, basically today to say thank you. Thank you to each and every one of you for your amazing continued support of the Rancher Mirage Wine and Food Festival. This last weekend, Friday went, if you were there, if you weren't there, you've got to go next year because the rare and reserved tasting we had Friday was amazing. And we had great weather. And then Saturday rolled around, where we had one of the largest storms in recent memory roll through. But fortunately, we had a tent, and everyone stayed nice and dry, and it went off without a hitch. One winery got back to us, several wineries got back, but one in particular said, you know, David, you can't control the weather, but you did one heck of a job of managing it. So the tent came in handy. I want to thank you all for your support, and especially three gentlemen on your staff, Ruben Surlos, Joel Castillo, and Noel Chicas. Without their help, just like last year, these guys are unsung heroes in the Public Works Department because, let me tell you, they are there, they're working, they have such tremendous pride in what they do for the city of Rancher Mirage and that park. They treat it like their own. And I just wanted to really come out and say thank you again. I can't wait to do it again next year, bigger and better, but thank you so much for having those three gentlemen support us. With that tent, it was an, we improvised. We had to put something together really quick. I had two options, cancel, that's not an option, or get a tent. So we did. But when Sean, you were there, you saw it got pretty dark when the clouds rolled in, and before I knew it, all of a sudden, there was light because there was Noel and Joel putting up lights, pointing him towards the ceiling. So thank you again for all of your support, and we'll see you again soon. Thank you.
David, it was a great program. How many people did you end up having there?
We had over 1,000. The rain definitely had a negative impact on ticket sales because people didn't want to get wet. But hey, next year, knock on wood, we're going to have clear skies again, so we'll do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think part of the success, David, was Lynn's wonderful expression that if it rains, we'll still pour.
Yes, if it's raining, we're still pouring.
And you did, so congratulations.
Thank you again.
The next speaker is Mark Albertson. Mark?
Good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the council and staff. I'd like to address the vacant lot which is adjacent to the library and observatory. And what I'd like to talk about is specifically the current temporary commercial use of that lot, and more generally, its overall appearance in contrast to our beautiful library and observatory, which are real treasures of the city of Rancher Mirage. Currently, the lot is being used for overflow for a physically based business in Palm Springs, and I understand that's going to be through the month of April, that it be used for storage of automobiles. And the reason I raise this is I live in Thunderbird Terrace at 71355 West Thunderbird Terrace, and our development backs up to the wash, which separates the residential development from Highway 111 and the library and observatory. And as you exit Thunderbird Terrace, we generally have a beautiful view as you rise up off the wash of the mountains as a backdrop to Highway 111. Currently, what we see are the bumpers of a host of automobiles, and it looks as though it's a commercial use intermixed with a residential development. But it's not the first time the lot has been used for other purposes. Obviously, it's an important and necessary overflow for the library and observatory, and so that use needs to be protected for those events, such as the Writers' Festival recently held where additional parking is needed. But to see it used for a commercial purpose, butted up against a very nice residential development, it's incongruous with the use of the residential properties in Thunderbird Terrace, in my opinion. What I'd like to suggest is the city consider that it be screened in the rear in some fashion so that it is not apparent to the residential neighborhood if it is going to continue to be used for either permanent or temporary commercial uses. I've lived in Thunderbird Terrace for three years. This is the second time the lot has been used for a commercial purpose. First was when the observatory was built. It was an overflow staging area for the contractor. After talking with the city about that particular unattractive use, the builder of the observatory placed a temporary fence along the back. The fence wasn't much more attractive than the pile of dirt covered with a tarp and used tires, but the winds took care of that. The fence didn't last very long, so we were back to looking at the debris from the construction of the observatory. So what I'd like to suggest is if the city would consider that its continued use be for other than overflow parking for the library and for the observatory, that some type of screening be put in place. Vegetation would be best, ficus hedge, or some other more interesting vegetation, so that again, as residents of Thunderbird Terrace leave the development, we're looking at something other than the commercial use that the city has put this to for a Palm Springs-based business. Thank you for your attention, and would appreciate any consideration of the request.
Thank you, Mark. Next speaker is Virginia Nelson. Virginia?
Good afternoon, Mayor Kite, council members and staff. I'm here to give you a little update on your Chamber of Commerce. And first of all, I am honored to be the chairwoman of the Chamber of Commerce this year. For 2019, it really looks like a great year for us. Our new executive director, Katie Stice, is already making a huge impact. She's developed some new sponsorship opportunities and also adding new members. We'll have some other new staff joining soon, and watch for some announcement on that in the next week or two. And of course, you know, our RAMI awards were last month. That was a great success, hosted by Aqua Caliente Casino Resort and Spa. And we did honor tribal chairman Jeff Grooby as our Barbara Sinatra Distinguished Citizen. Our theme for that event and our theme for the remainder of this year is doing good in the neighborhood. And what that means is it allows us to really focus even more so on providing excellent service to our membership and to the community. At that event, we also installed our Board of Directors, which continues to be a really, really strong group of local professionals. Next week, the board is going to be holding a retreat and planning session, so we expect some great ideas and some really positive energy to come from that. Other than that, we have a lot of really exciting events coming up just this month. Our monthly Power Lunch is next week on the 13th at Seabon Belgian Bistro. Our monthly mixer will be Tuesday, the 19th, at Mission Hills Country Club. Team Rancher Mirage is on Friday, the 22nd, with Mayor Kite to discuss local real estate topics. This year, we are partnering with Aqua California Bistro on an Oscar Night Party, if you've not heard about that yet. That's on Sunday, the 24th. There will be a red carpet event to watch the Oscars live. There's also a wonderful four-course dinner, and some of the proceeds they have offered to benefit the Chamber of Commerce. Then our monthly Business Over Breakfast is on Wednesday, the 27th. Our topic this month is on new employment laws for 2019, which is a great topic for our business community, and also especially focusing on new rules for independent contractors for 1099 employees. So that's just this month. Of course, information is always available on our website or by calling the Chamber Office. Any questions?
Yeah, good.
Okay, thank you very much.
You guys did a great job on your installation.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Alan Worthy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council and admin. Well, so we all know we all lost Carol Channing and Kay Ballard. They're two great friends of mine for many, many years, and I'll save a homage to them for two weeks from now, and not feeling up to that salt shoe routine today anyway, as a tribute. So the pressing thing, of course, is we're not getting the year off to a great start, are we? It appears that all those kids that were murdered were from all over the desert. And while I understand, of course, you can't see any, you know, every horror, as we well know, that may have happened anyway. But what we do know is the one word that needs to go in this desert, and that is apathy. And now I'm going to address Eisenhower head-on as politely as possible. I got a bad review the last time I spoke here. I called the third-party attorney, I said, watch it. Well, Mr. Phil Weiss in LA and Ms. Kaiser at Eisenhower, this is the issue that you never dealt with, right here. I said this before, and that's why I still have standing today, okay? And had you dealt with this, then this would never have come along, and/or I could have dealt with this. But because you didn't do this, I'm now dealing with this now in current time. With not the first three criminals, Mr. Surfing, not in the case that you got thrown out, but because you did nothing about those three, it devolved into the next three, you see? And here we are in real time with them committing all of these crimes. It's not okay. Ms. Kaiser, you're embarrassing the city of Rancher Mirage. You're embarrassing the desert. The doctors haven't been paid. None of my bills have been paid, regardless of when and where they're from, with these two things that coincided. I am owed the settlement, and I will never get out of the hole without it. And I expect you to be a grown-up over there and keep your word, because they've given me their word more than once, and they act like children, and they run away from the table. That is not okay. My life is a living hell over there. I went to sleep listening to those sirens and the helicopters, and I knew it wasn't just your average break-in, which I'm also threatened with all the time from these people, and threatening to kill me and harm me. Well, kill, okay, no, they haven't said kill me, but they've said bleed the blank out of me. Well, that wouldn't take very long, would it? Today, from these people, today, we are riddled with crime over there and everywhere. We don't need another three criminals on the street because Eisenhower did nothing about it. You couldn't see the first three, even though I reported them in due time, and nobody did anything about those three. And now I am demanding you do something about this three, okay? Thank you. It's been devastating start of the year. Thank you for all of your support. Thank you. Please continue to uphold the rule of law per the DA's office. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Okay, we'll now move on to the next item, which is city council reports, comments. First one will be Councilman Townsend. Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Kite. Last month, Rancher Mirage lost not one, but two great, longtime residents that were legends in the entertainment industry. Rancher Mirage has a long tradition of being home to top business leaders, presidents, and celebrities. Unfortunately, we now say goodbye to two of them. On January the 15th, Carol Channing passed away at the age of 97, 16 days shy of what would have been her 98th birthday. In 1949, Carol Channing became a Broadway star with the opening of Gentlemen Prefer Blondes. Carol went on to appear in several other Broadway productions, including Wonderful Town, The Vamp, and The Showgirl. She perhaps cemented her place as a Broadway star and legend in Hello, Dolly, which enjoyed a nearly seven-year run on Broadway and 10 Tonys. Carol was the recipient of one of those Tonys. She went on to play Dolly an estimated over 5,000 times. And on January the 21st, we lost Ms. Kay Ballard, who was a dear friend to Rancher Mirage and to me. Kay enjoyed a long career as a comedian and an actress, and like Carol, spent quite a bit of time on Broadway. She was generous in her time and very active in our community. Kay earned two lifetime achievement awards for the Desert Theater League and a lifetime achievement award from the Palm Springs Woman in Film and Television, in addition to a Golden Palm Star on the Palm Springs Walk of Stars. I had the pleasure of interviewing Kay for what turned out to be, unfortunately, her last appearance. A link to that interview was included as part of the digital obituary in the New York Times last week. We recently played some of that interview, and I think it only fitting to show a few clips now.
I wish I were 90 again. I don't know where I got it. I don't know why it happened, but I think I'm lucky because I always knew what I wanted to do.
My name is Ann Margaret.
Do you hear that? That's Kay Ballard.
I don't care.
Well, she made more people famous than you can imagine.
Bad, Kay.
She says it, and she delivers it right through your face.
She's original. She's not like anybody else.
Later, later we'll talk.
She's one of the great entertaining women of all time.
She can do everything, you know?
We'll have coffee, we'll talk.
She is magic.
Let's get real here.
She is really one of a kind. She's a character.
You're lovely.
You know, she really loves to put people together.
Well, she was good in anything she had to do.
She's a protean talent, and she always was.
Oh, really?
We're very lucky that we have the things that existed on television where she would recreate some of the nightclub things she did.
It seems we stood and talked like this before.
When you sit down and try to analyze her career, you just can't imagine what it was that kept Kay Ballard from going from here to here.
She's had this phenomenal career, and it continues to do so. She still works.
You do have senior moments, but it's not so bad.
Hit it!
Kay had quite the personality, and it was certainly on display during our interview. She called Rancher Mirage home since purchasing Desi Arnez's home, or his former home, from him in 1970s on the street that was eventually renamed Kay Ballard Lane. And Dana Hobart had a great deal to do with that coming to be. At night, she was very grateful to you for that, Dana. In this clip, she discusses how she became a Rancher Mirage resident. Now, let me take you down to how did you come to be in Rancher Mirage? How did this start 49 years ago? What was it like then? And how did you buy that house?
It was very easy. I said to Desi, "I'm gonna get you something for Christmas." He said, "No, you get nothing from me, except I want you to take this, this, this dress and you, you try this house, see how you like it." You go there for two weeks. So I went to, I came to Rancher Mirage and I said, "Wow, what's this?" And I see the house, and I walked in there, and he had a Santa Claus floating in the pool, you know, styrofoam.
Really?
Floating in the pool. And when I went inside, he had champagne and he had caviar. I said, "What a class act."
Very, very class act.
That's it. That's how I came to be in Rancher Mirage.
You know, one of the things that was very apparent during my conversations with Kay was that she loved Rancher Mirage, as you can see, so very much. She truly enjoyed being a part of the community, and of course, we enjoyed having her being a part with us.
Would I do it all again? You bet your ass I would.
I love that ending. Anyway, Kay and I were close friends for over 20 years, having spent many dinners at each other's homes. She was a delightful soul that will be greatly missed. The full interview of that will be currently airing on our RMTV Channel 17 and being shown before the council meetings in February, all for the month of February. So I will urge you all, if you want to see a great artist at her last, please do watch this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Charlie, great job in putting together that information, both on Carol and Kay. You did a great job.
Well, I had the help of a great sidekick by the name of Sean Smith in his department. He really worked with me on that.
Okay. Well done, Sean. Dana, do you have any comments?
I would just add to what Charlie said, that if you have an opportunity, which you do because it's on television regularly, to see the interview that Charlie did of her, of Kay Ballard, you'll really be happy that you spent the time. She was a great lady, and in that interview, much of that greatness seeps through because of the fine job you did, Charlie, and I recommend it to everybody. The city will never be the same without her and certainly never be the same without Carol
Iris, do you have a comment?
I do.
Okay.
Just a few words about the wonderful Jocelyn Center and some of its activities and its fun and educational offerings. So give a listen for just a few seconds because I would like to give you a small earful of some exciting things they offer. Paul has put on the screen their newsletter. It's their latest newsletter, which is put out every week, and if you don't already receive it, just go to their website and sign up. So the slide on the screen will give you just a quick glimpse of some things of interest. Thank you, Paul. In addition to those things, I would like to mention several things they offer so you can see the incredible diversity of activities available. First of all, the Jocelyn has a great program mastering health, healthy aging, along with creating stronger financial security and overall well-being. Also, you can learn French, Spanish, or German. You can also attend matinee movies. You can play table tennis. You can play lawn bowling. You can do calisthenics. You can learn tap dancing or ballroom dancing. Or if you prefer something a little bit less active, you can do quilting or use your artistry to paint, play the ukulele, play bridge, play mahjong, play pinnacle, or play canasta. And for memory improvements, you can learn several special techniques along with the ways to stay socially active. Something also very useful, there are lectures on problem-solving strategies. And if you really want to make a difference in someone's life, you can try participating in their wonderful program of Meals on Wheels, where you deliver food and visit with seniors who are not able to get out very often and rarely have the opportunity to speak with people. So there's also lectures on prevention, treatment, and management of different health conditions. Or you can even drop in for lunch, and a healthy lunch it will be, and you can, while you're there, have your blood pressure taken and keep on top of that necessity. But if nothing that I've mentioned tickles your fancy, you can just sit back and do my favorite thing, and that is you can play bingo. So do yourself a favor and check out their website, or better yet, stop by the center, pick up a brochure, talk to some people, have a cup of coffee, and visit with the staff members. I'm sure you'll run into somebody you know. So it's a very special place. I think you will really love it, and even though it's in Palm Desert, it is certainly a great part of Rancher Mirage also. So help yourself to all they offer and just have a good time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Iris. And Councilman Wild, Ted.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Monday, the Rancher Mirage Chamber of Commerce held its annual Rami Awards and Installation Gala at the Agua Caliente Casino Resort and Spa. A Rami Award is recognition of excellence on the part of the business receiving the award. Winners are voted on by Chamber membership in various categories. It was a fantastic event that honored several Rancher Mirage businesses. Moraca's Mexican Cantina and Grill won the Medium Business of the Year Award. Owners Todd Floyd and Jack Shrebnik, congratulations. The Westin won the award for the Large Business of the Year. The Westin Mission Hills Golf Resort and Spa is one of our leading hotel and resorts in Rancher Mirage and does just a great job. The Rising Star Award went to Rancher Mirage Wine and Food Festival, produced by David and Lynn Fraschetti. David told you a little bit about the event earlier today. It was spectacular. The 2019 festival was held Saturday at the Rancher Mirage Community Park, and I must tell you that they did a terrific job scrambling to get it done. Here we had inclement weather, yet they put up a massive tent, and you could feel the excitement and the electricity in that tent. It just came off very well, and as I said earlier, Lynn's motto about if it rains, we still pour, still worked. There were 1,000 people between the two days. The Business Person of the Year was Todd Blue, the owner of Indigo Auto Group. Todd and his team at Indio, Indigo, continue to run an incredibly successful operation. They are a very important part of the Rancher Mirage business community. Congratulations, Todd. The Barbara Sinatra Distinguished Citizen of the Year Award was given to Agua Caliente Band of Cahuilla Indian Tribal Chairman Jeff Groby. This award was well-deserved, given the many philanthropic endeavors Chairman Groby led over the years. Chairman Groby and the tribe have contributed greatly towards the betterment of the Coachella Valley. We pride ourselves on the relationship that we have with the, with the tribe. Indeed, they are a sovereign nation, but we consider them certainly part of Rancher Mirage and the family of Rancher Mirage. We have a, just an excellent working relationship, and, and we're pleased and beholden to, to that relationship. I want to congratulate the new Rancher Mirage Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Katie Stice and the incoming chairperson, Virginia Nelson. Virginia, you did a great job. You're going to do it. Be a great leader. I'd like, if you would, Virginia, stand for a minute, and Todd and Jack both please be recognized as the recipients of the awards. You are all very much an important part of the family. I know, I know your passion, each of you. I know your passion for the city of Rancher Mirage. I know the Chamber is just on a great growth path, and your individual businesses are just an incredibly important part of our city. So I thank you so much for being here and thanks for your contribution. The current board is the best that I can recall and consists of several key members of the business community. We are very supportive of our, of our Chamber's efforts and look forward to what's ahead. And as I say, during my time on the council and the many Chamber events that I've attended over the years, I can't recall feeling as much spirit and excitement going into a year as I have this year at the Chamber. And so I wish you all just tremendous success. Thanks for your contribution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. As you all can tell, there's a lot going on in Rancher Mirage, and another item we just want to comment briefly on was the Rancher Mirage Writers Festival, which ended last Friday. The Writers Festival has cemented its place as one of the world's best. Founded by Rancher Mirage resident Jamie Kabler, this gathering of writers, moderators, and readers is unlike any other. This year, attendees were treated to speaking engagements by Tom Hanks, Sally Fields, former California Senator Barbara Boxer, former California Governor Cherry Brown, and Gray Davis, and a host of world-class writers. There were 84 author sessions, 43 writers, seven New York Times Bestsellers, seven Pulitzer Prizes, two Academy Awards, one Tony, and one MacArthur Foundation Fellowship, all represented at this meeting. If you missed this year's festival, the tickets go on sale for the 2002 Festival on March 1 at 9:00 AM. That's Pacific time. The 2020 Festival will be held from January 29th through January 31st. If you're interested, do not procrastinate. This year's event sold out in three and a half hours. So for more information, please visit www.ranchermiragewritersfest.org. And don't be left out. This was another great event in Rancher Mirage. So at this time, we're done with the comments. I'd like to move to the approval of the minutes. And Iris, I understand you're going to abstain from the January 11th special meeting.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 11th special meeting and January 17th regular meeting.
I'll second that.
Iris, are you going to, you're going to abstain?
I will, yes, I'll abstain from the, the voting on January 11th meeting.
Okay, so let's vote on January 11th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, you can push the button. Vote yes if you're in favor, okay.
Motion passes 4-0 with Mayor Pro temp Smotridge abstaining.
And the January 17th regular meeting. Is there a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
And a second?
Second.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. Now move on to the consent calendar, and Isaiah Hegerman, our city manager, will present the consent calendar. Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get to the consent calendar, I just wanted to take a quick second and to thank city staff and the library staff for the amazing work that they put in in making the Rancher Mirage Writers Festival such a success. And if you get to witness what they do there, they do such a fantastic job. And in my opinion, we have such a talented group of employees, and they really shine during that festival. And there's a year's worth of work that goes into pulling off that event, and without the hard work and dedication of our staff, the event would not be what it is. So thank you to the library staff and to the city staff that helped pull that event off. All right, the council has six items on their consent calendar for consideration today. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1143, approving general plan zoning map amendment case number GZ, GPZMA 18002 Rancho Cove. Item number three is to adopt ordinance number 1144, approving specific plan amendment case number SPA 16001 Rancho Cove. Item number four on the consent calendar is that the city council approve the final track map number 36809-3 and direct the city engineer and city clerk to sign and record the map, and to authorize the city manager to approve an addendum to the Polte subdivision improvement agreement to permit the developer to immediately commence construction of Del Webb Way. And item number five are contracts. We have one contract on the list today, and that is for our Music in the Park series. And then item number six are demands, and staff is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Isaiah. Are there any questions, comments on the consent calendar? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Okay, could I have a motion, please, to...
Okay, I will move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, I want to comment about, just to tag on to the city manager's comment about the staff and the, the Writers Festival. It was truly an amazing international event and flowed so smoothly. Somebody said, when you think of the number of people that passed through the library at the various events during that three-day period, it was quite amazing. And somebody said it, it's analogous to Coachella Fest for the mind. And really, that's what it was. It was beyond compare. The, the talent that was there was world-class, and it's hard to conceive that it exceeded the prior year, which was superb. And next year's lineup is equally great. So again, Mr. City Manager, I applaud staff for the work that they did. They worked tirelessly and... They worked tirelessly and, most importantly of all, had a smile on their face the entire time they were working, which was quite remarkable. So thanks to staff and you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. I will now move on to the public hearings for the day and begin with item number seven, which is Resolution Number 2019, next in order, approving the designation of a property located at 37715 Thompson Road as a historic resource pursuant to Rancho Mirage Municipal Code Chapter 15.27. And Ben Torres, Associate Planner, will do the presentation. Ben?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The applicants, Gary Groff and Michael Patton, who are also the current property owners, are requesting a historic designation for their home located at 37715 Thompson Road. The approximately 3,900 square foot residence is located on the west side of Thompson Road, as shown here in red. Wallace Neff was the home's original architect, and it was built in 1955. The Historic Preservation Commission toured the residence on December 5, 2018, and noted that since various alterations have been made over the years to the home, the commission could not recommend a nomination based on the architectural merit of the home. Instead, the home is being considered as a historic resource because it was the former home of Red Skelton, a famous comedian of national recognition during his career, which spanned approximately 70 years between the 1920s and the 1990s. And he is most notably known for his involvement in the Red Skelton Show, which was an hour-long variety show which ran for almost two decades. Red Skelton purchased the property in 1962 and owned it until 1979. In 1964, Mr. Skelton hired the home's original architect to expand the residence by extending the rear window wall, adding a master bedroom wing, and a two-bedroom casita. On the left is a postcard showing the front of the residence, and to the right is one showing the rear after the 1964 expansion. Here are some pictures taken of the home's front elevation along Thompson Road, showing the home's decorative graystone driveway leading to the carport garage and woodgrain dual main entrance. The rear elevation of the home consists of deep patio overhangs facing the pool, shown on the bottom image, and the master bedroom wing and casita both flanking the pool area. The master bedroom wing is shown on the top left and the detached casita on the top right image. Both structures were added when the home was expanded as part of that 1964 expansion when Red Skelton was the owner. The property's connection to Red Skelton, a celebrity of national recognition, makes this residence uniquely qualified for designation as a historic resources. As of this date, the city council has designated 63 structures. If this house is designated, it would increase that total to 64. At this time, the Historic Preservation Commission recommends that the city council approve designation of the property located at 37715 Thompson Road as a historic resources pursuant to Rancho Mirage Municipal Code Chapter 15.27. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions, comments from the council?
Yes, I would like to say, knowing what went through and what went on to bring this house back to where it is today, congratulations to those who have the endurance to take on such a challenge and to make the Red Skelton House a remarkable, remarkable addition again to the city of Rancho Mirage.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other comments, questions? Like to open the public hearing on this item? And if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak on it, for or against, would you please come forward? Okay, we have no participation from the audience, so we'll close the public hearing and we'll go to council for a vote.
I will make that motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2019, next in order, designating the residential home located at F-37-715 Thompson Road, Rancho Mirage, California, Assessor Parcel Number 674-321-017, a historical resource.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, yes, sir.
Nice job on your first presentation, Ben.
Thanks, Isaiah.
You did so well, we're going to let you do another one.
All right, I'm ready for the next one.
Okay, if you're ready, we're ready. We're going to move on to item number eight, which is Resolution Number 2019, next in order, approving the designation of a home located at 37127 Marx Road as historic resource pursuant to Rancho Mirage Municipal Code Chapter 15.27. And Ben, you can do it all over again.
All right, sounds good, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon again. The applicant, Craig Traupain, representing the property owners, Stephen Harris and Lucian Roberts, is requesting a historic designation for the home located at 37127 Marx Road. The approximately 2,900 square foot residence, shown in red here, is located on the east side of Marx Road, a private roadway within the Tamarisk Country Club. This property is included in the city's Historic Resources Survey with the architect listed as William Cody. But based on the building plans and a Palm Springs Life magazine article that was provided by the applicant, it was concluded that the home's architect was instead Donald Wexler and Richard Harrison, and that the home was actually built in 1958. The current owners purchased the home in 2016, and they began an 18-month restoration process to bring back the original mid-century modern design of Wexler and Harrison after various alterations were made by the previous owners. The home's original plans, along with a photographic archive from a 1958 photo shoot, were used to guide the restoration process. The front elevation of the property along Marx Road primarily consists of a long decorative concrete driveway with embedded stones stretching for about 140 feet. This leads to the home's flat-roofed garage and main entrance. And the exterior of the home from the street frontage primarily consists of T-111 plywood and a smooth stucco finish painted in light gray and creamy white colors. Along the home's main entrance, a uniform row of spider legs helps support the covered walkway structure. Fabric mesh panels line the spider leg feature, preventing the adjoining landscaping from overgrowing into the entryway here. And two identically sized glass panels surround the main entry door, shown on the right, and they help create a sense of an open environment. The rear elevation still preserves the flat roof design and incorporates long stretches of smooth stucco along the northeastern corner of the residence, shown on the top right picture. The top-left image utilizes floor-to-ceiling glass, which creates a smooth transition between the stucco and plywood exteriors. The pool area creates a seamless indoor-outdoor living experience with a vast expanse of floor-to-ceiling glass windows framed with gray-painted aluminum mullions, deep roof overhangs, and an overall flat roof design. Landscaping is thoughtfully incorporated to create a sense of privacy but maintaining an open environment throughout this area. Unique architectural design elements shown within these pictures include the home's deep roof overhangs, spider legs incorporated throughout the property, landscape integration with the home's architecture, and the seamless transition between the indoor and outdoor environment, as shown on the bottom picture, with floor-to-ceiling glass windows along the pool area connecting to those on the main entrance. This transition is further enhanced by the home's incorporation of indoor ground-level landscape planters. The Historic Preservation Commission toured this property also on December 5, 2018, and noted that the restoration was impeccable. The home's impeccably restored mid-century modern design, in addition to it being designed by Wexler and Harrison, make this residence uniquely qualified for designation as a historic resource. As of this date, the city council has designated 64 structures, which includes the recently designated Thompson Road House. If this structure is designated, it would include that total to 65. And at this time, the Historic Preservation Commission recommends that the city council approve designation of the property located at 37127 Marx Road as a historic resource pursuant to Rancho Mirage Municipal Code Chapter 15.27. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Is there any comments, questions from the...
Yes, I have a comment. I will ditto what I said about the Red Skelton Home to those who have taken on this project. Rancho Mirage has a great history of wonderful architectural venues that are being restored, and my hat is off to all those who bring forward and go through the hard work and the red tape to bring this to fruition and bring them back to their original beauty for the benefit of all, especially the city of Rancho Mirage. I also want to thank our historical commission, who does such a fantastic job, and there's two of them sitting right there, Ray and Carol, along with Bud Cop, who leads us all down the road to making the right decisions when it comes to the question of historical preservations in the city of Rancho Mirage. Also, Melissa Ritchie, who's sitting here. Melissa, hi. Melissa is a very valiant in her attempt to bring us into focus, and she has done it, and you have succeeded. And she has also written a fabulous book on the history of architecture in the city of Rancho Mirage. And to her, with her steadfastness, and her and I hollering at each other, but it's all fine, and your point was well-taken, and I commend you. Really done a wonderful job. And with that, if anybody else has a comment or not, I will read the whatever.
We have to open the public hearing first.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, with that, and we'll go to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is there anybody who would like to say anything in regard to this home? Okay, seeing none. Just want to reiterate what Charlie said about the great job that the commission has done. It's amazing the number of homes we have accumulated over the years. What started with one or two, now we're up to 65. So that's great. We certainly are right at the top as far as preserving the best of the best in Rancho Mirage.
Mr. Mayor, and you noticed that the address of this particular residence is Marx Road. And of course, the Marx family still is indigenous to Rancho Mirage. Bill Marx lives here, the son of Harpo. And so it's kind of fitting that this historic residence is on Marx Road. And again, you did a great job restoring it and keeping it in its condition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now close the public hearing, and we'll go to a vote. Charlie, did you want to make a motion?
I would be delighted to do that. Let me say before I say that is Rancho Mirage, again, has a great treasure of very famous properties. It's not all about Palm Springs, because we have right there in the running, and we're right, right, Melissa? We're good, right? There you go. And we appreciate it. Believe me, we really do. And with that, I will make a motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2019, next in order, designating the residential home located at 37-127 Marx Road, Rancho Mirage, California, Assessor Parcel Number 674-292-005, a historic resource. Congratulations.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, Olivia. We will now move on to the action calendar, and item number nine is ordinance number, next in order, first reading, amending Chapter 6.70, Keeping, Care, and Treatment of Animals of Title VI Animal Services of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to add provisions for residential beekeeping. And to hear the presentation, Jeremy Kleim, Director of Development Services.
Thank you so much, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor mentioned, for your consideration is the introduction of an ordinance which would amend Chapter 6.70 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to allow for residential beekeeping. So staff began researching this topic in late 2017 and soon discovered that it was being addressed at the federal level through a task force that was created by a 2014 presidential order. And obviously, the purpose of the proposed ordinance is to provide the framework for residential beekeeping within city limits. Our Assistant Planner, Joyce Tsai, compiled the vast majority of information that went into the development of this ordinance, so I'd like to thank her for that. And for the purposes of this meeting, I'd just like to share a few of the provisions that are being proposed. I'm not going to go through everything, but to name a few, beehive colonies shall be located within the rear yard of private, single-family dwellings. There can only be two colonies on any property that is less than one acre in size. All beehive colonies shall be kept in inspectable hives consisting of movable frames and combs. Beekeepers shall maintain adequate records and best management practices and proof of requeening every two years. And in addition to those things, there are requirements for hive placement and orientation, access to water, barriers between properties, and nuisance behavior. So before we finish the ordinance, we contacted the co-compliance personnel from the city of Palm Desert no less than 10 times over the last year, simply to ask about any issues that had materialized as a result of their ordinance, which passed in 2016. The most recent of those conversations took place just last week. And I'm happy to report that they have had no nuisance calls related to residential beekeeping since their ordinance went into effect. With that said, staff recommends that the city council adopt the subject ordinance. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Is there any questions?
One comment, I may.
Yes, David?
I don't know that we have to include it in the motion, but it would seem to me that it would be propitious on our part to include mandatory notification of neighbors so that they won't be surprised when all of a sudden they see some bees flying around and build up a negativity toward the neighbor who has the bees. I mean, it's extremely important that we increase our bee supply in the world, but certainly here as well, because of the degradation of plant life and others that we face, because we have a dying number of bees. And this is an effort to kind of begin something on a local level to restore colonies. And I really do think that if we could insert as a part of this motion that it be mandatory that neighbors within, I'd leave it open, what, 1,000 feet, 2,000 feet, something like that, be informed when a colony has been approved by the city.
Jeremy, did we send out public notices to all the residents within a certain distance of the proposed location?
So this is just a citywide ordinance, so at this point, no public hearing notices were now, it was noticed in the paper.
Okay. Isn't there a setback rule that we have in place?
So the proposed ordinance requires that any apiary or colony be set back at least five feet from any property line and that the orientation or the opening to the colony be faced into the subject property.
Do you want to explain how someone just goes into the backyard and sets this up? Or do they have to go and get permits? What's the rules?
So the state of California requires that any beekeeper submit for an application, basically through the state, and... basically through the state, and locally, the county would be the ones that would accept those applications. But there are strict regulations for beekeeping from the state that these people have to abide by, and that's why they have to keep adequate records for a period no less than two years.
Good, so the city is not involved with permits?
No, there's no applications that will be required for city submittal, but as part of the ordinance, we can certainly add language that can be ready for second reading that would provide, or that would require them to reach out to their neighbors.
Okay, Dana, back to you.
Yeah, I look forward to that.
Okay.
Any questions, comments from the council this day?
I do have a comment, but I'll wait until after we vote.
Okay. Any other questions, comments of the staff? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Would you like to come forward and give your name and address?
Yes, hi, Brad Anderson. I live on Ferber Drive. I just became aware of this too, and I agree with Mr. Hobart about notification. I think that's important, maybe a little more study of how fly, how far these bees will travel in a day, and maybe emphasize how far the notifications will go out. And the setbacks, I would think, maybe possibly, I'm just suggesting that maybe the setback should be like, for any outbuilding, maybe 10 feet away from the property line, something like that. And the notifications are great, especially for neighbors, either if they're pro or not pro, because they probably have landscapers that use insecticides and stuff, and they may be prone not to do that if they knew their bee colony was in the area. And I, I walk around my block several times a week, and I, every spring, I notice, or winter now, I notice dying bees on the roadway, and I know it's because of all the contractors or landscape companies coming in and using insecticides on people's property, but if I notice it, it's bad. So I think, yeah, the more colonies we add, the better it is. And I've had moving colonies come in and just rest for a day or so on my grapefruit tree, and I've seen them on the ground before in Palm Desert, and I would just emphasize anybody that sees that, just leave them alone, they're on the move, and they're gonna find a new home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for closing comments and a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Iris, did you have a comment?
I'll wait until after the vote.
Okay. Dan, you're making a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion that the city council introduce ordinance number, next in order, first reading, amending Chapter 6.70, Keeping Care and Treatment of Animals, of Title VI Animal Services of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, to add provisions for residential beekeeping with the addition of Councilman Hobart's suggestion as to the appropriate notification of neighbors when such approval is granted.
Is there a second?
Would we be leaving it to staff to determine the number of feet that we're talking about? I think we should probably include that in the motion, and I would amend your motion to include that with staff having the final review with respect to the distance separating bee hives and other residents in the neighborhood.
And that's acceptable.
Jeremy, did you get that down?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second to the motion, please?
I'll second it.
Please vote. Thank you. Now, did you have a comment?
I did, because I'm particularly thrilled that we are going to, in Rancho Mirage, contribute to the restoration of some of the loss of our bee colonies. A couple of years ago, I came home from being away for a few days, and there was probably about 3,000 bees, dead bees, on our patio. And of course, the cause was unknown, the cause of their death, and we were never able to figure it out, but obviously, everything we can do to restore these colonies and elongate the lives and the importance of what these bee colonies do is more than important. I know that we have our own bee colonies on some of our properties in central California, and we've never had a complaint, and our neighbors feel that it's such a worthwhile effort to replenish whatever loss we suffer. So I thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, can I raise an issue? I think the speaker earlier had a good point when he suggested that there be 10 feet rather than five feet separating the beehive from the residence, next-door residence fence or other barrier, and I would move that we include in this motion an amendment of the five feet numbered to 10 feet.
So Steve, we've already approved this motion. Is this a brand-new motion?
You did make the reference that, in regards to the setback, so we can, we got the direction, 10 feet.
Well, I could move to recall the motion and amend it. I'll move to recall the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote on the recall of the motion.
Okay.
And would you like to make a new motion, Dana?
Yes, I would. I'd just like to make the same motion, but amend it to indicate that the separation between the bee hives and the nearest neighbor be 10 feet rather than five feet.
Okay, is there a second, please?
Second on that.
Please vote.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Can we bring up Jeremy's PowerPoint again? I just wanted to congratulate Jeremy for the most appropriate PowerPoint theme I have ever seen. You nailed that one out of the park.
Very artistic, very artistic.
We know who to call on for our next animal resolution. Okay, good job.
Very good.
You know, we find humor in this, but boy, it's probably one of the greatest threats to our environment worldwide because of what we are doing to animal life such as these bees, and it's a real tragedy for which we all must assume some degree of responsibility.
Okay. I will now move on to the final item today, item number 10, which is resolution number 2019, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number One, and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services. And this will be presented by Kofi Atoban. Kofi?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. The item before you this afternoon is, for consideration, is annexation 178 into Community Facilities District Number One. This is the first step in the city's standard process for the annexation of development within the city's jurisdiction. The final step, the final step in this process will be considered at the March 7, 2019 council meeting. As projected on your screen, if the aerial can be put up, the territory proposed for annexation is highlighted in green in the center of the screen, and it's located on the northeast corner of Dyna Shore Drive and Los Alamos Road, and comprises of a portion of one parcel totaling approximately 87.5 acres. The entire project, which is commonly referred to as Del Webb, at buildout, is slated to have 1,200 units and an 18,000 square foot clubhouse. This particular annexation, 178, covers 307 of those residential lots. Preliminary development plan, PDP number 17001, was approved by the city council on July 20, 2017, and has a condition of approval, number 54, to annex into CFD Number One. In accordance with the condition, number 54, the owner of the annexed territory, Polty Homes Corporation, submitted a petition for the annexation, requesting that the city council initiate annexation proceedings to annex the territory and provide for an expedited approval of the annexation and levy of a special tax. If approved, this will allow the city to accept the petition submitted by the owner for annexation, consent to the levy upon the annexed territory, allow a shortening of the time for the special election to expedite the annexation process, accept the prelim, and preliminarily approve the annexation map and direct the city clerk to record the map, and finally, establish the date and time of the public hearing for the annexation and levy of the special tax. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution, and that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kofi. I neglected to say that you're the Director of Administrative Services. Any comments, questions on this item? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this annexation? Seeing none, come back to the council.
Nothing for me.
Any questions?
No.
Comments? Can I have a motion, please?
Okay, I'll make that motion. I move that the city council approve and adopt resolution number 2019, next in order, declaring the city's intention to annex territory to Community Facilities District Number One, and to levy a special tax therein for additional police and fire services, preliminarily approve a map of the area proposed to be annexed, and schedule a public hearing to consider the annexation and the levy of the special tax for annexation number 178.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to closed session, and Steve Quintanilla, City Attorney, will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For another city, I'm working on an adult entertainment ordinance, so I was wondering if Jeremy could help me with my PowerPoint presentation.
You have to meet with him later, okay.
What do you mean by adult entertainment?
You don't want to know. So the city council is going to recess into closed session to confer with legal counsel regarding one significant exposure litigation item pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. The council will also consider the case of Veronica Juarez versus Rancho Mirage, and New Circular Wireless DBA AT&amp;T Mobility versus City of Rancho Mirage pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. And finally, the council will confer with the city manager as his real property negotiator regarding the price and terms of payment with reference to property located at 42 Shoreline Drive.
Thank you, Steve. The next meeting of the city council will be Thursday, February 21st at 1:00 p.m. We will now recess to closed session.